One, it's a little bit after seven o'clock, which is our official start time, and I was a little bit late myself, so I apologize. But uh, let's get this meeting started of the Dallas Planning Commission. Uh, tonight is Tuesday, April the ninth, twenty twenty four. It's a little past seven P M. And I want to call this meeting to order, so we will have the roll call. Mister Secretary, thank you.
Commissioner Swanson?
Here.
Commissioner Grow.
Here.
Commissioner Kowash?
Here.
Commissioner Banford?
Here.
Commissioner Schulte?
Here.
Commissioner Spofford?
Here.
Commissioner Newell?
Here.
Uh, Quorum is present.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, agenda item number three is the approval of the minutes, regular meeting of March the twelfth, twenty twenty four. I was not here, neither was, uh, Andy, my vice chair, so Tori Branford filled in for us and, uh,
Able.
I was a brand or was that one? Yeah, I read your name. So he filled in, uh, for us and did a great job, so, uh, I wasn't here, so I really don't have anything to say about the minutes, so.
There is one quick change.
Okay.
Number eight, it says Mister Swanson. I don't believe that's correct since you're not here.
I was not even in the country.
So maybe we can change that to correct person that actually was at. I think it might have been me. See what pages this is. Um. It's the second and third page in under number eight.
Uh, would have been Banford, right?
It should be, yeah.
Do you remember doing that?
Just say yes.
Yeah, just say yes.
It's on tape, so we can.
Yes, so.
I don't think it's critical.
Beyond that, I would, uh, move to approve.
Thank you very much. Second, so moved and seconded with the correction that I was not here and Tori, uh, adjourned the meeting. We will approve the minutes. Agenda item number four is public comment, and this is an opportunity for citizens to.
You want to have us vote or did we?
Oh, yeah, should.
Okay, we should vote on the approval of the minutes. Okay, everyone, uh, uh, in favor of approving the minutes with the correction, uh, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Nobody opposed apparently.
No one is opposed.
Okay.
And thanks again, Tori, seriously, for, for stepping up. I appreciate that. I, I didn't realize when I planned my trip that it was going to directly impact my ability to be here, so I appreciate that. Or I would have called you in advance and given you a fair warning.
Well, I volunteered to drive over from the coast, but they said it wasn't necessary.
Yeah, I was further away than that.
Yeah, I know you were.
Okay, so, uh, agenda item number four is public comment, and this is an opportunity for citizens, uh, to speak on any item related to city of ballot, uh, city of Dallas community development business that is not on the agenda this evening. Uh, it's important, so I always make sure that I emphasize that. So is there anyone present or with us electronically that would like to make a comment before the planning commission this evening that is not on our agenda this evening? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
Uh, no callers in the queue.
Okay, good, that's helpful. Thank you. Okay, so moving on then, we have two public hearings this evening, agenda item number five. Uh, our first public hearing is conditionally use, uh, uh, application number twenty four oh one Carson Commons submitted by the Polk Community Development Corporation, which is a proposed twenty unit apartment building at three seventy five East Ellendale Avenue.
Three seventy three or three seventy five?
Did I read that?
Seventy three.
Three seventy three, thank you. I like to be here ten minutes early and I wasn't, so, and that would make a lot of difference. Okay, so I read from a script when it comes to public hearings to make sure that we're all, uh, uh, in line with, with state and city law in terms of how we do land use decisions in the city of Dallas. Uh, this public hearing is regarding property that is located at three seventy three East Ellendale Avenue. This is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission, and I now declare this public hearing open at seven oh seven P M. As the application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I read the following statement. The failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the commission and the party is an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue recludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based upon that issue. So please direct all testimony to the record and the applicable criteria listed in the staff report or to criteria in the Dallas Development Code that you believe applies to this decision. The applicable approval criteria are found in, uh, I'm getting better at doing this. Uh, yeah, D D C, uh, Dallas Development Code four point four point zero four zero A, conditional use permit approval criteria. Dallas Development Code four point two point zero six zero A, site design review approval criteria. And Dallas Development Code two point two point oh seven oh and two point two point one zero zero special use standards applicable to proposed use. At this time, I will ask any of the planning commission members if they have a conflict of interest, a site visit, or an ex parte contact to declare in this matter. Seeing none, we move forward. Uh, this hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report, followed by questions of staff. And by questions, that's planning commissioner questions of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of fifteen minutes. And this may be followed by questions from planning commission members. Thereafter, we'll hear from all other interested parties in presenting testimony on this item before the commission. And each person will be provided with five minutes to testify. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes to rebut any comments that were made during that period. After we have heard all testimony, I will close the public hearing and ask the planning commission deliberate, and then ask if there is a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the planning commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. Chase, may we please have the staff report on this conditionally use permit application?
Um, yes. So, um, this request, uh, is for, uh, a conditional use permit for a, uh, apartment building in the general commercial zone uh, by the name of Carson Commons. Um, it's twenty apartments, uh, which would be nineteen one bedroom apartments and one, uh, two bedroom apartment. Uh, so twenty apartments total. Um, in the general commercial zone, um, dwellings on the ground floor, not in conjunction with a permitted commercial use, um, are conditional use, uh, in that zone. Um, so that's why it's here in front of you as conditional use permit, uh, because it's a residential use in a commercial zone. Um, the location, three seventy three East Ellendale Avenue, um, that's, uh, over there on the north side of the town. Um, so it's on Ellendale, right across the street from Jiffy Lube. Um, you can see it there on the vicinity, the location of Walmart and Safeway, so, uh, not very far from that. It's there at the corner of Uglow and Ellendale. Um, so in that sort of commercial area, um, but to the south and to the, uh, east, there are, uh, multifamily uses already. Uh, there are several apartment complexes in that area and including other units operated by Polk C D C. Um, so, uh, zooming in, uh, we can see a little bit more of the immediate vicinity. It's, it's right where that, uh, crosswalk is with the flashing light as you go down Ellendale, so a very memorable landmark for, for members of the community here. Um, and so currently it is a, a single family home. Um, and so you can see that the house that's there currently. Um, the proposal would include the demolition of the existing structure um, and the construction of a new apartment building. The, uh, building elevation facing Ellendale, um, would look something like this. Um, and so you'd have, uh, you know, windows on, on the side, uh, there'd be an entryway facing Ellendale. Uh, and then from the site plan, we can see that, uh, on the south side of the property, um, away from Ellendale, there'd be a parking area with, uh, eighteen parking spaces as well as an additional entrance to the building on, on that side. Um, so for conditional uses, um, there are three approval criteria. The site has to be adequate for the need. Uh, negative impacts on decent properties, uh, can be mitigated. And public facilities have to have adequate pass, adequate capacity to support development of the site. Um, for site design review, there are five criteria. The application is complete. Um, the underlying land use district standards are met, so it's the standards of Article Two. Uh, non-conforming development should be upgraded. If there is any non-conforming development that happens to be on the site, in this case, there, there really isn't. Um, designs, standards of Article Three are met, so that's, uh, landscaping standards, site access, parking. Um, and then, uh, pre-existing conditions of development are met. Um, in this instance, there are no pre-existing conditions of approval, um, since that house has been there, um, for a very long time, so. Um, the, uh, the staff report goes into some, some greater detail on those points. Um, on the subject of the land use district standards, um, we do have architectural standards, uh, for apartment buildings. Um, and so those are kind of the, the special use standards that were referenced in the, uh, uh, approval criteria that Swanson was referring to and referenced in the staff report. Um, there's also the, the standard architectural standards for the, uh, commercial zone. Um, so both of those sets of standards apply. Um, in the case of the, uh, the commercial zone standards, though, there is, uh, the provision at the heading of each of those sections um, that those standards can be adjusted through the type two review, provided that the adjustment is consistent with a stated purpose and the applicant demonstrates that the alternative proposal meets the stated intent of that standard. Um, and so that's relevant to us as there are several, uh, items that are required, requesting, requiring exception. Uh, and the staff report goes into greater detail on each of those individual items, how they relate to the applicable, you know, purpose statement and the, uh, the justification for that, uh, in there. But that would be the, uh, build to line requirement, the corner entrance, uh, the building base um, ground level window transparency, uh, the window trim, the pedestrian shelters and the, uh, civic space. And so again, the staff report goes into quite a bit more detail than I'm gonna go through here. Um, but the recommended conditions of approval from this, um, obviously the standard boilerplate are first one that they have to get the applicable building permits before they can, you know, occupy the building. Uh, standard boilerplate on that. Uh, second recommended condition of approval is to have a widened sidewalk on Ellendale. Um, as well as the appropriate, you know, easements or dedications to accommodate that. Um, several of the, uh, approval criteria or several of the design standards that are not being met reference. You know, if you're not meeting the standard, these are the sorts of things that you can do. Um, yeah, as a condition of not meeting those standards, and so, um, widened sidewalk is, is one of those options. Um, certainly the applicant can discuss that, uh, in, in greater detail. I, I believe they're prepared to do that. Um, third condition was for the decorative brick pattern that's referred to in the, uh, criteria, uh, to be surrounded, uh, you know, to have windows located and walls that are clad with, uh, brick be, you know, having that decorative pattern that was referred to, but isn't really as visible in the, the two dimensional rendering that we were provided. And then using the changing cladding materials to differentiate between the third floor and the lower floors. Um, and so uh, that was the recommended conditions of approval that are in your staff, uh, report. Um, in discussion with the, uh, uh, city attorney and with the, uh, city manager. Um, we may also be considering a revised condition of approval, number two. Um, since the, uh, approval criteria or the, the language that surrounds the exceptions um, for the design standards refers to, uh, a type two approval. And, uh, planning commission is of course a type three approval. Um, that the applicant apply for and obtain a type two approval needed for the adjustments. Um, and if they're not able to do that, then apply for a variance. Um, that could be another way of approaching it if the planning commission doesn't feel that they're able to make an affirmative decision today is to instead, um, say, hey, we'll approve, uh, or deny, I suppose, contingent upon getting a, uh, follow on variance or adjustment as the case may be, so, uh, potentially another way of addressing that, uh, that situation there. So that's what I have for you on, uh, staff reports. I know the, uh, applicant has, uh, some presentation materials for you as well. Um, but if there are any questions for the staff, certainly happy to answer those as best I'm able.
Hey, thank you, Chase. Well, uh, I'm sure that planning commissioners may have questions for you, but I'm gonna start, and I would like for you to please, uh, address the, go back to the slide that shows the different adjustments that are being seven different uh, adjustments requiring exception. So, why don't you just fill in the blanks on some of these? Build the line. What does that mean? I mean, just, if you would just please go through these.
Of course.
Uh, yeah, and, and my reasoning is not to prolong the procedure, but just to understand that, uh, in addition to the conditional use and the parking situation, which you didn't address in the staff report, that.
Oh.
Uh, there are seven other requirements that are requiring exception. Could you please explain those to us?
Yes, uh, and you're correct. I, I forgot to include the parking in my PowerPoint. I, I apologize for that. Um, yes, so, uh, the first, uh, is the build to line. Um, so in the commercial zones, um, in residential areas, most folks are familiar with the idea of a building setback. You have to be a certain distance minimum from the property line. Um, in commercial areas, we flipped that narrative. Um, so you actually have to be within a minimum distance of the, uh, the front street facing property line. Um, in the downtown core, you have to be all the way up to it. Um, in the general commercial zone, which this is, you have to be within ten feet of that street facing property line. Uh, so no more than ten feet. Um, and as per their, their, uh, design, their, their, their site plan, um, only the very entrance to the building facing Ellendale is actually within that ten foot distance. Um, the rest of the building is either ten foot nine or farther, depending on the depth of the recesses along that facade. Um, there are a couple of different reasons, uh, the applicant has, has shown for that, uh, the slope of the site. Obviously, the site's not flat. Um, as well as conflicting. As well as conflicting easements for for utilities and also for the the slope on the back of the sidewalk for ODOT. So. If you're not meeting that that build-to-line standard, having the building within that ten foot of the the street. There is a set of. Language in there of things that you can kind of. Reasons that that exception can kind of be granted and things that you might do in those circumstances. So for corner entry, when properties are located at a street corner where two streets intersect. The primary building entrance is supposed to face the corner. And have a corner plaza. If you're not able to do that, then you have. There's language in there about providing either the plaza or having some kind of architectural feature that. Draws attention to that corner as being like a civic kind of space. For the the building base.
The reason. For not being able to provide a corner entry.
Just the floor plan of the building as designed and then also the elevation of the site. The corner is the the high point of that site. And so both Ellendale and Uglow slope downhill away from that intersection. So if you were to have that. Be the primary building entrance. That would be quite a bit above grade from where your parking lot is, from the other parts of the site. And so then that has like. Wheelchair access kind of issues because the building would be a lot higher than the rest of the site, because that is the high point, so.
The street would be a lot higher than this, the building is what you're saying.
Right, so if you're having the the entrance to the building be at the corner, then. In theory, the floor would have to be kind of at that street level, right? And so when you look at the the site design or the site, the building as designed, where is it? You can kind of see the ground slopes down towards where the door is, so the way that this design has been set up. The part where the door is coincides with the elevation of the sidewalk. And so as you get further away from that door, the sidewalk is either higher or lower than the the floor of the building. And again, where that corner is, is the highest point on that site. So building base, the language has, the the code has some language about differentiating the. Top, middle and base of the building through the use of different materials. Specifically with regards to the building base, the code would call for it to be between. The ground and the bottom of the lower-level windows, kind of that that. Foundational kind of space is having a different set of materials, providing that kind of feeling of strength. They've proposed to go with kind of a different interpretation of that, where you have that. Lower-level material for the first two floors and then have a separate middle material for that third floor. And then you have your your top, your cornice above that. So a different interpretation of that. Concept. Not necessarily to the specific letter of the code, but to the extent that it. You know, could be interpreted as complying with the the purpose statement of the code. That's certainly an interpretation.
And staff concurs of that interpretation.
It's a reasonable way to go, whether you buy that or not, is is obviously your call. I so I I I'm fine with with them doing that. Or if you want to say, hey, you gotta do, you know, that fake a brick or whatever under your window at the ground level, I mean, that's that's on you, like. So ground-level transparency, this is the one that's the most challenging from a code standpoint. Because the the code requires the ground floor to have a certain percentage of window transparency. Because it's trying to emulate that downtown historic storefront kind of feel. This isn't a storefront, this is a residential use, and so having big storefront windows into people's apartments. So there might be a little bit of a disconnect in the code on that one. Because again, this is an allowed use, it's not prohibited, it has the conditional use review, but it's allowed with conditions. So it seems like there's a little bit of a. Code conflict there, and so the windows that they're proposing. For the ground floor, again, are are of the same size and style as the ones for the rest of the building and. That seems to provide for a cohesive overall appearance, so. Seems like a reasonable. Reasonable exception under the circumstances.
And that's the primary reason that this is a condition view.
No, no, the primary reason this is a conditional use is because it is a a residential building with dwellings on the ground floor. In the commercial zone. But not in conjunction with a commercial use, yes, so that is the primary reason that is a conditional use. If this building was in a residential zone, then we probably would have processed this as a staff level approval. If it was a commercial use on the ground floor and apartments above, that probably also would have been a staff level approval. But because there's no commercial component, because it has dwellings on the ground floor, that's what brings it to you as a conditional use.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then for the other design exceptions, window trim. Where the windows are directly embedded in the brick, there's no, there there's no trim around that, the code requires a four-inch trim. Case that windows, you put them right in the brick, so. That seems a reasonable, you know, architectural solution. Pedestrian shelters are supposed to be a minimum of five foot deep. And so on the side that faces Ellendale, they only have three foot and some number of inches. Between the face of the building and the edge of the ODOT utility easement. And so their proposal was to make the. Oning the cover be that same distance. And then have the awning on the other side of the building match that same size, so that.
But the awnings propose to have like a post or something around, then.
No, it looks like from the design, they would be sort of cantilevered off of the building.
So there really won't be a shelter, it'll just be a cantilever.
Right, yeah, so it'd be kind of like some of the the awnings that you see here on the downtown street, where it's kind of hangs up the building, yeah.
All right, well, one more question there, and why there's no post down into that utility easement, why can't? It project over the utilities?
I I don't have a answer for that, I mean, obviously, in the downtown, we have, you know, awnings that project over the right of ways, so I don't.
Downtown is different than. Commercial, so.
Code doesn't differentiate on on that section, but yes, to the extent that. Maybe there's some language in that utility easement that prohibits any encroachment, I've. I've not seen that language, I can't.
I could.
So that might be a question for the, I'm looking to draw this. And then the final one, the civic space, three percent of the site is proposed is required to be a civic space. Kind of for the benefit of the public. And so that could be like your your corner plaza, where you have your entrance at the corner. Or, you know, other methods, wide sidewalk, you know, cafe seating on on the sidewalk like you have in in the downtown. So there's different ways to approach that, but three percent of the site has to be that sort of civic space. And there's a requirement for a certain percentage of the project total cost to be spent. On pedestrian entities in that civic space. And so the language that the applicant has provided, they're proposing their civic space be the. The space between the. The building and the parking lot, so as we look at the site design. You have that landscaped area with the the sidewalks there between the parking lot and the building, and so that would be their designated civic space. Instead of being more facing alongside the line. But that's where that would be, so.
What's the proposed population for the apartments?
I don't know, there's a specific population number, it's twenty apartments, nineteen of which are one-bedroom, so.
No, I actually mean, is it veterans?
Oh, I see.
Is it? Yeah, you'll, okay, they're gonna respond.
They'll get to that.
Yeah.
That was not really part of the application, as I recall, so.
That would make a difference in whether or not that was needed. In the front.
So does that kind of answer your questions there on? Oh, yes, sorry.
One space is required, eighteen are proposed.
Yes, so the way that we calculate required parking in the code is that. It's based on the number of bedrooms. And so for nineteen-one bedroom and one-two-bedroom. Unit, that would require twenty-one parking spaces by code. The preamble to the parking chapter essentially says that the applicant has the the option to, through the the type-two, you know, adjustment process. Provide their own parking, you know, demand analysis as to why the number in the codebook. Isn't right and what the number should be instead. And so in this case, you know, the the low-income population that they're, you know, serving historically has a lower car ownership rate. And so that seems like a reasonable justification for reducing the number of parking spaces by three. So. Or by by two. Yeah.
Well, thank you. And the reason I asked you this is because I didn't want to put the applicant on the spot. I think it's a good project, but when we're asked to look at six or seven or eight deviations from code requirements. That leaves me to ask questions to staff, so. Thank you very much. Is there any other commissioners that have any questions for staff regarding the staff report?
I spotted a better understand, if you wouldn't mind going to the last two slides, the two. Revised conditions, I mean, in this scenario, it seems like, so they're still having to address the conditional use. Because it's not commercial, so they'd have to come back for a variance too.
So that would be one approach if if. It comes to the point where we're not able to find a supportive finding at this point because of the, you know, non-attainment essentially. Of those design standards, that that could be one way to to approach that.
Good, what's staff opinion on that?
What is my opinion on that, that's interesting. So this language, again, was recommended by the the city manager after some further review and discussion of of. Basically, the proposed conditions that we had and the applicant's kind of objection to them. Because this would replace the requirement for the the widened sidewalk along Ellendale, which. The applicant is not necessarily enthusiastic about, I think is a. Politically correct way to say that, so. If instead of doing that requirement, we were to say, hey, you need a variance, but you haven't really applied for a variance, you've applied for adjustments, and so. Come back with a variance and you're good to go, so.
So I can understand why, if we widen the sidewalk, that might affect the budget. Honestly, I kind of like the idea of it being a little wider, since the street is so busy. But then part of me goes. Okay, well, do I want more parking or do I want more sidewalk? And I don't think there's a really good answer for that, because we haven't done that analysis. Not sure that having them come back for a variance feels good to me.
Especially after the fact.
After the fact, and with seven other recommendations. So, or adjustments, I guess I would say. So that's just my opinion about maybe which direction we should go.
Questions, though, for staff?
I actually am wondering, how did we get to the sidewalk condition versus the other condition? Was that based on the commercial and what would be acceptable?
So to the extent that the the language in the code, now I'll flip to that section of my book here, so I can. Say it directly.
Yes, please.
Yes, for some reason, I did not get a copy of the staff report like you all did, sitting on the dais here ready for. Allow me to flip to the the section, the book where it's actually printed, printed. Yes, and so it's the the build-to-line. It says that an exception to the build-to-line may be approved or required in the following situations. And so section C was kind of the one there where. I'm sorry, section E. Where a public utility easement or similar restricting legal conditions make conformance to the build-to-line impracticable. The build-to-line shall instead be placed as close to the street as possible, given the legal constraint. And pedestrian amenities, example, plaza, courtyard, landscaping, outdoor seating area, et cetera. Shall be provided within the street setback in said location. And so that's where, you know, kind of that widened sidewalk concept came from. As being potentially less expensive than, you know, a plaza or a courtyard or, you know, those those sorts of things. Similar kind of situation with the civic space as well. Not entirely sure that having the civic space between the parking lot and the building really. Kind of met the intention of that code. Didn't really. Call that out explicitly in the staff report, but. Was a very fine line on that, and so kind of between those, between those sections, it seemed like that might be the the better way to go.
Thank you, that helps.
Yeah, now, ten foot versus, you know, eight foot. I mean.
Yeah, 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 I'm not gonna go there.
Or maybe the applicant has a different proposal on how they want to address conformance with that, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Based upon the staff report, and thank you, Chase, for filling in a few of the blanks there.
Yes.
Anyone else? Anyone else, okay? So then we will move on to the. Applicant, so we'll invite the applicant to go up to the dais, please state your name, your organization, your street address, and. You had about fifteen minutes to make your presentation. And it's nice to see you, Rita, we know each other very well, so I'm glad to see you here, I think this is a good project, so let's hear your. Your presentation.
And I'm only gonna talk a couple of minutes, because I have a whole team behind me.
Can you turn the mic on there, Rita? Hold it for a second. There, there you go.
You're good. Okay.
Yep.
All right, Rita Grady, I'm the executive director of Polk Community Development Corporation. I live at one-two-two-nine-zero Oars Corner Road in Dallas. And I'm just here to just, I want to introduce the team first, and so behind me, we have. A lot of different people, we have our entire BDA architecture team, which is Amanda. And Kevin. And we have our operations manager from Polk CDC, Kimberly Lyle. And we have Matthew, I don't know Matthew's last name, but he's with lock engineering. And so he's here also, and I'm sure we'll be talking about slopes and all that good stuff. So our general contractor is not here, the general contractor, construction company is INE Construction Company. They've done a lot of work for us, we have been developing affordable housing for a good number of years in Polk County. And we, our office is here in the city of Dallas. I want to just talk a little bit briefly that the funding for this project is from several different sources. One is from OHCS, Oregon Housing and Community Services, which is state funding. The other one is through the Oregon Health Authority. And then also private financing. So we're pretty excited about all of those funders that have a lot of confidence in what we're doing. And I want to just talk just briefly about the population we're going to be serving. So we're looking at this as a multi-generational type of project, so we'll have many different ages and. One thing we're very excited about is we have nine or ten units set aside for. I'm gonna say young adults. The technicality is adults over eighteen. That have aged out of foster care or dropped out of foster care. Been picked up by Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency, who is our partner. And these young folks have a certain level, varying levels of. Serious and persistent mental illness, that sounds really terrible, but it can be anywhere from. Depression. Or more serious, but they'll have wraparound services, these nine or ten folks will have wraparound services, they'll enter to a lease. With us, we will manage the property. And Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency will provide services to these nine or ten young people. And, uh, Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Day, Action Agency will provide services to these nine or ten, uh, young people. And other than that, the property is open to the public. Uh, rents will be set at fifty percent, sixty percent and eighty percent area median income. What's the area median income of the city of Dallas? It's sixty seven thousand nine hundred and thirty five as of nineteen twenty two or two thousand twenty two. And so fifty, sixty, eighty percent of that is the maximum for our, uh, population that we'll be serving, so. I would like to turn this over now to our architects who can continue on with their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Ruland with BDA Architecture. Do I need to see my address?
Do commercial address is fine.
Uh, thirteen sixty nine Olive Street, Eugene, Oregon. I think that Chase did a wonderful job already of presenting a little bit of background information, so I think we can just skip this slide. These are just a few photos of. Existing conditions. What I wanted to walk through a little bit here was just how we got to the design that we have today and then obviously. Why are there so many exceptions that we're we're asking for? Um, so basically what I want to talk about is is the balance of this site. We have a site that slopes from the northeast corner down to the southwest. At that northeast corner, there's a small retaining wall around the exit back of the existing sidewalk. As well as a small retaining wall where that crosswalk is. So already we're starting with a slope that's a little bit lower. From the inside out of the building, we have three entrances. One that is at Ellendale, one that is at Uglow and one that is facing the parking area. Those two entrances that are at Uglow and Ellendale are at grade. And so it's really a product of, we have a required number of entrances that we need from a building code standpoint, but and exiting from a building code standpoint. But also, how are we connecting into this street scape fabric? And so again, where do we set our finished floor? Well, it ended up being, you know, slightly below. Where our sidewalk is at the very northeast corner, so the balance. Now we have to look at how we're going to cut and fill this, how are we going to fit? The amount of parking that this client feels is required based on what you had heard about this resident demographic. So now we're trying to fit our our parking in, we have a pro forma of the number of units that can be supported on this site. Again, just trying to balance as best as we can within this, within our parameter of this of this site. And so I could go through the exceptions that we're looking at. Um, specifically when we look at the build to line, you know, that one in particular. We have, it's a little bit blurry here, but there are three easements. Um, three O dot easements, one at five feet, one at seven and a half feet from the property line and one around that crosswalk. So those are all pushing, obviously, how close we can get. Um, to our property line, which is really just over the edge of the sidewalk along Ellendale. That's really where I want to concentrate, uh, what we're looking at here. Then when we look at, when we talk a little bit about the corner entry, um, actually, could we go to the the next slide?
Of course.
Thank you. So this is a rendering of what it would look like. Um, again, you know, we wanted, we understand that we don't have an entrance to the corner, but we really wanted to bring. Some focal point to this corner portion of the site. So that's, you know, shown in this render, we can see this a little bit clearer. You know, what we're trying to attain here as, you know, part of the the gateway on Ellendale into the into the town. Um, from there, we want to talk a little bit about the building base. We can see how we're changing. Materials between second and third floors, so we're we're trying to treat that those lower levels as one condition and then the upper portion as a different material type. Um, talking about the ground level transparency, you know, that is, that is a product of residential being on the ground floor. Um, you know, it's again, this balance between privacy from the inside, but also, you know. Setting back far enough that anybody that's on the sidewalk, um, we're using some landscape screening. Between the the building and where people are actually walking, you know, we we don't want to have a sidewalk that's. You know, five feet from somebody's window, you know, that's just not appropriate for either. Private or public interface. Uh, the window trim we we discussed really briefly, where we have a little bit of setback and some detailing. That we're going to be, uh, pushing in between the windows between second and third floors in the masonry. And then the pedestrian shelters, um, there was a question about that I wanted to address that. You know, we're going with our pedestrian shelters right up to that seven and a half foot easement. Because once we go past there, you know, that could be really. Uh, ODOT can do whatever they want at that point, if they want to do any type of work in that area. Um, we want to make sure we stay away from them and we're giving, you know, giving them their space. And then there was a question about civic space, um. What we're not seeing right here is that that entry into L and L, um, is wider, it's more generous, we're dressing it up. Um, there's ample space, we could have a bench there, um, you know, we could really make that, you know. Feel like a little bit more of of a pedestrian amenity in that area. But as far as trying to look at, um, you know, widening the sidewalk, that's really what this comes down to, you know, is. We understand the four conditions that we're looking at, obviously, we're going to get permitting for construction, the third and fourth ones. Um, as far as there was, I have to take a look here. Um, the decorative brick we addressed, a change in cladding. It comes down to the the sidewalk and understanding that, you know, we've we've tailored this for a five foot sidewalk, this was, you know. Due to us that it would be widened, um, and again, you know, we're trying to. Improve upon that pedestrian entrance as much as we can that's facing Ellendale, but also with providing privacy screening from the existing sidewalk. To people's people's homes, people's apartments. Amanda, did you want to add anything? Amanda's gonna come up and speak.
Say your name.
I'm Amanda D'Onofrio and, um, share the same business address of thirteen sixty nine Olive Street in Eugene, Oregon, nine seven four oh one. Um, you know, I think the thing that Kevin has done a good job of starting to outline is that northeast corner of the site. Already being our high point and and on what we think of as a flat site, they're not left here in Oregon. Um, we have a cross slope of about seven feet to deal with across this point four one acre site. And so when trying to set these buildings, Kevin addressed the accessible entries. Um, you know, again, needed for egress, thinking about people bringing bicycles into this building. And just meeting your public street in a gracious way. Um, you know, setting that building, uh, any higher to make the corner a more usable area. Was going to float a building above Ellendale and Uglow, and so. The balance that Kevin was talking about is really this striking between, um. What we can do, given those legal easements from ODOT along Ellendale, the impact on from those. The impact of the existing slopes, um, pretty deeply at the corner intersection, sort of creating, um. You know, trying to work with a valley condition and getting drainage between there. And then, you know, um, a lot of these things are coming hand in hand. We aren't meeting the build to line partly so that we can also get a pedestrian canopy over the main entry. But that pedestrian canopy can't be five feet deep. Because of the ODOT easement, because we don't want them, uh, ODOT. Being them to come and tell our owner they have to rip the canopy off their building, because even though it doesn't have a foundation. We just can't build in the easement without the ability. For that other organization to tell us that something has to be removed. So it has been the striking of a balance on this site. To meet, uh, the desired program to provide housing in the community. Um. And create something I think that Polk CDC is really proud of on this corner, so.
I think.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Conclusion of the, uh, stay right there, just in case there's questions. This is an opportunity for, uh, planning commissioners to ask questions of the applicant based upon their presentation. I've got a couple, but does anyone else have anything they would like to ask the app?
I got a question that no one else does. You talked about floating the building up, is there a maximum building height? In this area and are you, where are you in relation to how high your building is? To the maximum height?
Thirty five feet is the maximum building height and we are at. Thirty four feet, eleven inches. No, we're we're very. Yeah, on the record, it's it's close, but we are under the maximum building height.
Sounds good. So if you were to raise the building up to meet that corner thing, you couldn't build this building there. Correct, got it, thank you.
Excellent, good, thank you.
Good luck.
Any other planning commissioners? Uh. Back to the pedestrian shelter, you say you're trying to stay out of the ODOT right away, I get that, uh, is that a requirement? Or is ODOT precluding you from doing that or is it possible to? Provide to meet the code for pedestrian shelters?
It's their easement, not.
I would say, yeah, just related to the fact that it's an easement, um, and it's a legal agreement with that entity to be able to do whatever they want to within that space. And so if they determined they were not okay with, um, an overhang. And and admittedly, when we get deeper than the three feet ish that we're proposing. We would be looking at something that would need supportive posts and ODOT could potentially in the future say that it isn't okay that you've put it in our easement, that's just generally.
So you did present this to ODOT and they pushed back against it and said you want to keep it out of the right way.
On the record, no, because it's a legal easement, this is just sort of the understanding that you don't build anything, you don't want torn out, um, of an easement. We did specifically talk about walls, retaining walls, and they said no. So, um, yes, private well, and as would our, um, our canopy would be. But to to Kevin's point, um, which I'll let you elaborate on, we did have, uh, correspondence with ODOT. Specifically about a retaining wall at that high corner, um, of our site. As one potential way to deal with the landscaping grade change if we were modifying there. And we were precluded from putting a landscape wall in their easement. So we didn't specifically talk about the canopy, but I think the same could be assumed.
Okay, thank you. And tell me about the parking. Efficiency, three spots couldn't fit three more spots on the site.
Honestly, no, um, so there's, um, but truthfully, the the owner's justification is that they are serving people that don't have cars, it felt like. This was the the presentation of not needing as much parking and when they look at other properties, they felt comfortable. With not needing as much parking, but if, do you mind going back to the site plan, Chase? It's pretty packed, um, Troy. Ra- Crawford, Crawford, thank you, Troy Crawford, the fire marshal has precluded us from using any street parking along the, um. Uglow Street, we're actually striping that whole side of the street red with a, um, no parking fire lane. That's because the building is over thirty feet high and so we're required to provide aerial access, so, um. We aren't going to be using the street parking there, which might have originally been anticipated when we were first talking about the project. But again, the owner feels very confident through talking through this, um, with the service provider. That the eighteen parking spaces is sufficient for the population who will be living here in mostly one bedroom units.
Sure. And my understanding is if there's a justification that the parking standard can be compromised.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, appreciate that. Commissioners, do we have any other questions of the applicant based upon their, uh, presentation? Andy?
Quick one, um, are there any bicycle parking spaces? And Chase, are there any bicycle parking spaces required in the parking lot or is it able to put them in the apartments? Okay.
Um, so the city council did not, uh, adopt the planning commission's proposed amendment to the bicycle parking standards. Um, so the standard for parking remains, uh, one parking space for every twenty apartments. Um, they are proposing more than that, which would be accommodated in a bicycle room within the, uh, development. Um, in a way that would have conformed with the proposed language of the code had that been amended, but it wasn't, so. They are exceeding the minimum now, um, and, uh, yeah.
And covered. Okay, covered.
I've been dying for a winter, um, so this actually, this entry into the building is to a bicycle room that will park sixteen. Bicycles in a secured, guarded, heated enclosed.
Nice.
Cool.
Which is optimal, yes.
Um, and quick question, you've only got one eighty eight, one. This isn't so high, so you don't need to point them out. You got one ADA space, I presume that's sufficient for the number of parking spaces you have?
That's correct, um, for R two housing, which is what this is, you need to provide one space per unit. Um, you know, most of the code, when you're talking about other opportunities are based on, if you're under twenty five parking spaces, you need one. With R two residential, you do it related to the required R two, um, type A unit. And that's one in our twenty units of housing, so therefore one.
So you have one ADA, so therefore you need one spot.
Yes.
Okay.
Got it. You were, you were speaking a foreign language, but now I understand based on her voice, and thank you.
I was just curious as to why there is one two bedroom.
Why are there not more or why is there just one?
Just curious why.
Yep, the product of the two bedroom is because it extends over that bicycle parking corridor on the first floor.
Okay.
All other units are stacked.
I have a quick.
Okay, go ahead, Tori, thanks.
So. In lieu of, uh, the wider sidewalk or, um, plaza space, I guess a similar plaza space, um, I'm just gonna go up and show.
I'm curious if storm includes something here, you know, some kind of paving or something that, you know, where you can patch or access off the. Sidewalk.
Yes.
Space there. So offset the wider sidewalks.
Yeah, and so, you know, kind of what we were thinking is, you know, this here, um. Would be an area that we were thinking about doing, uh. Ornamental plantings and monuments sign for the project, we have. The fire department vault there through optimal connections to existing utilities. And so, uh, you know. This was part of why as we were thinking about people coming in either through this part of the site.
So Cora, you're there.
Architect who likes everything, and then the next one comes in and just is mild.
You're both doing a good job of that.
Um, but you know, this emphasis on kind of the main entry, the entry lobby, and so trying to really make that civic and connected outdoor space be through there. You're going to be meeting your neighbors where you're coming out, where you're checking your mail, and so putting the emphasis on that part of the building. And because we have this big emphasis on bike parking and trying to do that in a secure way. It felt really good to do that off of, you know, that has a bike lane along it. And then, um, you know, and we've got this wider entry area, it's almost that ten foot width at the building entry already. Um, so it's a really natural space to put. A bench and in it the nexus as a little bit more public space than we had been given it before. Um, and potentially even taking that full width all the way out to the street rather than, you know, where we were showing in there.
Just gotta do.
I like that idea. It tends to get cut in the plans when we run out of money.
You know, and I think, um, you know, we're we're kind of there and so the idea of extending that to the street.
Yeah.
Versus bringing the public sidewalk closer to people's residential units, admittedly in Eugene, we have the absolute worst examples of, um. Residential units right on.
Right on the street.
It doesn't feel good for anybody's bed, for anybody's living room. And, um, and that's, as Chase made a great point, is why we're here tonight, is this is a conditional use.
Residential units on the ground floor, and so we're trying to do that with dignity for both sides, the public and the private residents.
So the residents can use any of the entrances, so if they have a car, they could go to the back, if they have a bike, they can go to the front. They can walk any, any, any of those, it's not like blocked off.
No, no, those are two main entrances to that building.
I'm sorry, I didn't get close enough to determine that in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, uh, from commissioners, Andy?
One more quick one, we've been talking about this ten foot sidewalk and it just occurred to me that you're. Got an ODOT easement there. Is the ten foot sidewalk going to be over the top of their easement? And is that going to be a problem with ODOT or have you a chance to talk?
So we have not had a chance to confirm that, um, Matthew, our civil engineer with Lock Engineers has been trying, um, almost all day. Uh, to contact Casey at ODOT, um, just him on the record, didn't I? Um, and so we don't have an understanding of the implications, our assumption is it, yeah. Um, and so we don't have an understanding of the implications. Our assumption is it, yeah. Not gonna assume, we just don't have um, an understanding of how they feel about this five foot extension in their easement.
So the current sidewalk is five foot?
The current sidewalk is five foot wide. This would be doubling the width of the existing five foot walk and that that would
Be to their easement.
Overlap. Um, there's, that is, um, it's a five foot slope and utility easement. And then the seven foot six easement that overlaps, that is truly just for utility, public utility.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, um, your conversation about the enhancements to the plaza, you might want to think about maybe cobbling some language together as an alternative condition of approval too, that addresses what kind of enhancements you might want to be talking about. That would help avoid it getting lost in the uh, in the project. And offer something for the planning commission to uh, look at anyway. Picking up on what you've been saying, you could think you do.
Okay, and um, Lane, when you say that uh, following up with Chase in a a formal document, or you're cobbling together some language now, okay.
And you can use it generally, but enhancements, pedestrians, uh, amenities, that kinds of thing. Just in words describing what you've sort of been pointing to on the map or on the site plan. You don't need to do it right this minute.
All right, um, when would you like us to bring that back?
Are there any other witnesses?
Well, let's get to that. Uh, uh, so we've asked our questions. Thank you applicants for your presentation. I think it was excellent. Um, are there any other planning commissioners with questions for the applicant? Seeing none, we'll now hear from anyone in attendance tonight who would like to address the planning commission on this item. Uh, we don't have anybody uh, on the queue electronically, so we're talking about folks in this room. Is there anyone here that would like to speak uh, to this project uh, on the record before the planning commission? We have one. Thank you, ma'am.
So my name.
Please step forward. It it's only because of the microphone so that we get all this on the record. It's to make sure that your comments are are heard and recorded. So your name, your address, and then uh, you got five minutes or so to address the planning.
I have a couple of questions in the comments. My name's Michelle Stacy. Uh, my address is four two four Rose Ave, Southwest Rose Avenue here in Dallas. Um, my main concern is the pedestrian entry on Ellendale. I avoid that street as much as I can as a resident of Dallas, especially with that crosswalk there. My concern is that putting benches out there, extending it as an encouraging entrance would encourage people to get dropped off and picked up there. Um, which would be a hazard for other drivers, pedestrians and everybody else. Um, I'm not too familiar with this actual proposal. This is the first time I'm actually seeing it. The other thing I had questions about was um, in some of the pictures that I'm seeing online for the presentation, it looks like there's proposals for um, EV charging stations in the parking lot. Um, which I just found odd since we're not planning on using all the parking spots because these people aren't going to have cars. We're encouraging bicycle use. Um, which I think is great, but my concern is coming in and out of the building on Ellendale. It just, I feel like if you extend that pedestrian covering or anything, it's going to encourage people to congregate there and create a traffic hazard. For Uber and Uber Eats and everybody else who door dashes and whatnot. I would be concerned that that would be considered a main entrance.
Um, but they're putting the the red, you, it doesn't.
On the other street.
That doesn't.
I'm talking about on Ellendale, the entrance.
There's no parking.
Like a cross from Walmart right by the crosswalk there. That's, that's my concern.
Okay, well, uh, those are your concerns. Do you have any questions?
So my question would be, as far as the entrance, is it, is that set like where it's going to be? Is that like a firm thing? Could it not be moved to the other side where the gravel surface is there or something just to encourage? I don't know. It just seems.
I I I would say this, and Lane and staff can can correct me if I'm wrong. The address is on Ellendale Avenue and they're already asking for an exception to put the primary entrance on the corner, which is a requirement. So I don't see uh,
And I think we heard the three entrances is a sparkle requirement. Uh, did you say that?
Um, there's.
Uh, two exits.
Yeah, though I will say that.
Wait, yeah, wait, you can do rebuttal when we're.
Yeah, so I I just wanted to make sure I totally understood your your question, your concern, ma'am. So thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I I I hear your concern. We we all hear your concern. Do you have any other questions or concerns? Well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else, anyone else here this evening that would like to speak to this uh, application and all the nuances that are attached to it? Seeing none, this is an opportunity for the applicant to rebut the concerns that were presented in public testimony.
Kevin Rowland BDA, just back on the record. So I just wanted to speak to the three items that we spoke about. Um, so the second stair to the right that we have, we are required to have an exit directly from that stair. So just we're clear on that. Um, the EV charging stations, uh, the infrastructure for EV charging stations is a state law. So we're putting in the conduit and junction box, but we're not actually installing the the charging just as a heads up. And then there was one of them. Oh, yeah, the entrance to uh, Ellendale is residential only. Um, so you know, you would need to basically have a key fob or access into the building to go in there. Um, as far as we were talking a little bit about the enhanced pedestrian space, you know, what does that language look like? You know, I definitely think, well, if I can just.
You know, I think we'd be open to the idea of widening this space. You know, potentially adding a bench, but if there is pushback on that, there's very little latitude to improve the amount of parts get here in a bench. But again, you know, that's less eyes on here. This is just a small residential entrance. So I think we want to promote that if if possible, but again, we're we're open to. Here to leave that.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question to what he just said?
I was just about to say, are there any final comments uh, that we would like to uh, put out there? Go ahead, Andy.
So you're putting in the conduit for the EV charging station. It's a state requirement. Why are you not putting in the EV charging? Uh, thing. I mean, don't people who don't want to spend four dollars and fifty cents for gas might want to have an electric car?
Well.
Is there a reason to not actually install the EV charging station?
Well, first of all, most of our tenants don't have electric cars. It cannot afford them because we're looking at families that are individuals at fifty, sixty percent area median income or lower. Um, I imagine our nine or ten uh, young adults who have been homeless and have been living in a shelter and now are moving over into permanent housing. They're going to be working on getting a job and getting their GED and getting their social security card and all of those things, not having an electric, you know, uh, vehicle. And within two years, we're hoping that they're able to stand on their feet and move out and there'll be more young folks living there. So that's just it. Um, if we need one, we can always put one in later.
So maybe there's a question for the engineers. So it's required by law to make it EV accessible, but not required by state law to actually install the EV facility.
What, or by ARCA?
Or by ARCA.
What triggers the requirement to put it in? Anything?
No.
Oh, this is a fun law.
I'll send it. Do you want me to send it to you?
We take your word for it.
I know, I believe you. I'm I'm, I just bought it all.
Because it is fun to read.
Oh, I would love it. I I'll get together if you don't mind. I'll give you my email address.
So the follow-up question to that, which seems maybe obvious, but I don't know, is if we had the EV station, wouldn't you have to have a parking spot that was there exclusively for that and therefore you would lose parking for the tenants? Isn't that countering to it? Maybe? Okay.
Okay, well, are there any other final comments uh, based on everything that we've heard? Staff report, applicant testimony, uh, public testimony, questions? Is there anything else that the staff or the city attorney would add as final comments before I close the hearing?
I would just say if the planning commission isn't happy with either of the alternative uh, uh, second conditions of approval and want to come up with some language, if you've got language to propose or you know, whatever the council, whatever the commission's do. Right now, you've got those two options before you, uh, one of the staff, one that Chase showed on the screen. And if you'd like to uh, come up with an alternative, then.
I would uh, add on uh, to the the comment that uh, Andy had regarding the charging stations. Um, so there's the state law that requires the conduit to be installed in the ground anytime you're building a new parking lot under certain definitions of of state law. Um, there's a a separate body of state law regarding uh, the installation of the actual charging heads in residential situations where the tenant, the tenant can basically request it and the property owner can't say no. Uh, but the tenant is responsible for paying for the charging unit itself. Um, so the big cost of putting charging in is putting in the conduit. So if you already have the conduit there, little bit of wire and the charging head, well, it's just property of the tenant. They can take it when they go. They can have whichever make and model of charging head they want. So.
Thank you.
Sort of.
So do you know the same rule she's talking about?
I'm very familiar with.
I don't need your.
I'll forward it to you.
Yes, and speed dial.
But so that's, so there's kind of that two separate bodies of state law. There's the conduit and then there's the wiring and the charging head. Separate responsibility.
Thank you.
Certainly, thanks.
So if we're going to choose one.
Not discussion right now.
Are we still in discussion?
We're still asking
Okay.
questions about the test.
We're not deliberating yet.
We're not deliberating.
Okay.
So you might want to, you might want to hold on.
Hold on. Okay.
Okay, no more comments from staff, the city attorney. Thank you applicants. Thank you uh, uh, public testimony. Um, without any further ado, I declare the public hearing closed at eight twelve PM. And now it's time for deliberation by the planning commission. And as I like to do it, I'll go last. So Carol, if you've got something that you'd like to present deliberation, let's add.
So if in fact, we're going to pick one of the two options, I think we have to amend it for the approach that might be taken um, by the applicant to improve that area at the Ellendale entrance. So I would like to understand what you would like in this condition if I amended.
Oh.
Can they?
Well, why don't you put something together, write something out, and then we'll get back to you on that. I I appreciate that, Carol.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, so with that aside, as to what a new condition would look like, we're going to allow the applicant to present something to us.
Okay.
Do you have any other uh, questions, comments, uh, items for deliberation on this, on this item?
I am a little concerned still about the parking issue because Uglow is very tight for parking and it sounds like we're going to take some away for the fire side of Uglow. And so I'm still concerned about it, but I'm willing to go along if we can come up with some kind of amended condition to.
Thank you. Anyone else? John?
Uh, do I correctly understand that the major issue here is first floor residential use of commercial property?
Correct.
That's kind of the central issue.
That's the central issue to the that requires them to apply for the conditional use.
Can I ask the staff to remind me again why that's okay? For the rationale?
Uh, the rationale for that, um, I would be hard pressed to to explain that because I wasn't there when the code was written.
No, not for the code.
For for allowing.
An exception to.
Right, so um, residential uses um, on the ground floor in commercial zones, not in conjunction with the commercial use. Um, they are allowed in the commercial zone with the conditional use permit. So there's, there's essentially three categories. There's things that are allowed, or there's things that are prohibited, things that are allowed outright, and then things that are allowed but require additional review. Um, and so that's the conditional uses. So it's, it's not a prohibited thing, like they can do residential in the commercial zone. They just have to have that heightened level of review because there may be site-specific impacts that um, would stem from that, that uh, would need to be addressed through the conditional use process. Um, impacts on on the neighborhood, on the community, those sorts of things. So.
You're saying that none of those conditions exist then?
Right, so to the.
There's no, there's no basis on which to. You speak this.
So as far as the conditional use approval criteria, um, there there were the three that we kind of had at the beginning um, that it has to be, where did I go? Sorry, too far. Um, so the site has to be adequate for the needs of the proposed use. Um, negative impacts on adjacent properties can be mitigated and public facilities have adequate capacity to support the development. So those are the three approval criteria that are specific to this is a conditional use. Um, what are the impacts? What are the conditions that we would impose to address those impacts? Um, and so in this case, it appears that the site is is adequate. Um, there's no negative impacts on the adjacent properties that can't be mitigated. Um, and public facilities have capacity to support. So from the conditional use criteria, it appears those are met. Um, part and parcel of the conditional use permit is also the site design review. So there's the additional five criteria for that. That's what pulls into play the site design review standards that we've been talking about. Um.
But but the the question, how is the residential use allowed as a condition we use in the commercial zone? He has to raise the code says so.
Yes, yeah, so.
Good enough.
Go ahead, Tori.
I just want to say generally, this is a great project. Um, happy to see um, these housing needs being met. Uh, great location. I think it's a challenging site, so the way that everything's fit on there, um, I commend the efforts that were made. Um, I agree with Carol. Uh, eager to speak to condition two. Um, the intent of having it on the build two line or to the street is to avoid having the parking lot so you don't have that hole. So in this ten, in this instance, I mean, it makes sense. You don't have a ten foot sidewalk going right up against residential windows. So I think there are other ways we can address the public space to fit the condition, condition two. So I'm eager to have that discussion.
I'm just curious as to uh, is it possible to put the red striping on that Ellendale side to prohibit? You can't do that.
It's already yellow, isn't it?
It's not painted on the curb. It's marked as a bicycle lane.
Yeah, and red is a fire lane, so that would really be a fire marshal exercise, not ours.
Yeah.
So there's already no parking.
Right, yeah. It's a, it's a traveling with bicycles.
Any more deliberation? Commissioners? Andy, go ahead.
Um, regarding this ten foot sidewalk, um, I guess first questions for Chase and for the city attorney are are, I guess, I guess I'm reading DDC two point three point zero eight zero C two build to line. And it specifically says, "Commercial buildings, including mixed-use buildings containing residential and commercial uses, shall conform to the build two line." This building is not a mixed-use building. It's um, does not include residential and commercial uses. Is there a way we could eliminate this ten foot sidewalk? Because I I have serious concerns about whether ODOT will allow and putting a concrete sidewalk over an easement. Um, can we just eliminate the improvement to the the improvement to the sidewalk? Because I think this is an excellent project. And I think it'll work just fine. And I think the ten-foot sidewalk has more negative things being putting pedestrian access closer to people's windows at ground level, especially when you're higher than the floor level of the building. Um and but more as an engineer not wanting to put concrete sidewalk over an easement. And because, you know, an easement basically means you have to be able to work in it, which I believe is part of the reason ODOT wasn't doesn't want something over the top of it, because if they go in there with a backhoe, they don't want to have to worry about knocking it off.
Yeah, I think you can. Um and uh that was one of the reasons I asked for maybe some alternate language, because they were expressing some other ideas that seemed to spark interest among the planning commission that you really wanted to see incorporated. And if that's the case, I think you could take out that ten-foot sidewalk and put an alternative uh condition of approval to Uglow without if you want, but I got the sense that the planning commission had was resonating with some of the things you were describing, and I would like to see that.
That's kind of where I was going with it is if we don't do the ten-foot sidewalk, what can we do instead? Makes sense for the project that they they would like to do that we could put in instead. So I'm with you.
And yeah, and and I can see the the area that they've got on the Ellendale access is wider, so it does
Yes.
end up being more inviting. And for my for my own personal thing, I would think that if I lived in this place with all the commercial entities on Ellendale or that way, this is gonna be the way I wanna walk to get out of here. So eliminating the entrance is a no-brainer.
Right.
Um and uh yeah, I mean, I I don't I don't have a big need to make it bigger or stick out farther or anything else.
No.
I just think I think it's adequate in the situation that you've got with the easement. I think we make it happen. And I think they've done a good job to make it look nice and and those other considerations. So.
So I try to track the conversation. You're oh you would just eliminate two then entirely and leave it up to?
The ten-foot sidewalk?
Yeah, oh yeah. So you you'd eliminate?
I would eliminate. I would leave the sidewalk as existing.
Right.
And and the way they've got the entrance, I think.
You're satisfied and not not any enhancements.
Not make it any enhanced.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
I I was just curious as to, it says a change in cladding materials shall be used to differentiate between the third and lower floors. And and they've done that, but I'm just, what is the reasoning behind that?
Oh, under requiring it as a condition? Um yeah, so um when they were talking about their proposal for how to satisfy the building base uh materials kind of standard, um that was the proposal that they they gave. Um and so that would be essentially uh monumenting uh memorializing uh the approval that the planning commission had for that uh design variation. So that's why it was a condition.
Make it look pretty.
Yes. It's stating explicitly in the conditions that their proposal was approved.
Okay.
Same same with the the following one about the the brick and the windows. It's a more memorializing and and the conditions that their proposal was approved. Okay, see you smiling as I say that.
Are are there any? Are there any other uh commissioners that would like to uh speak to this issue, deliberate upon it, uh present any more discussion? At this time, uh I think since it's my turn, uh I think it's a good project. Chase, what's the term that we hear about once a year about our rental housing need deficiency? Something sounds drastic.
We we are a rent severely rent and burdened community.
We are a severely rent burdened community and uh I know I asked a couple of nitpicky tough questions about the nature of this design and but I think that that, my opinion is that uh our 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 need for rental housing for citizens that are at risk uh that are low income that are transitioning from a less favorable living condition to a more favorable one, I think deserves uh our our support. Um so uh I agree with Andy that eliminating the need for uh a ten-foot sidewalk and also eliminating the need for these folks to come back with a variance and getting into the ins and outs. And do we approve it with a condition that they get an approval for a variance? Which we've been down that road a couple of times, which I am a hundred percent uncomfortable with.
Yeah.
Uh so my opinion is to uh and we're not voting yet, we're still deliberating, but I'm offering my opinion. My opinion is that we approve this project as presented with the elimination of condition two that requires that ten-foot sidewalk.
Um upon uh further review of the point that Commissioner Grove raised regarding the applicability of the build to line, um staff would concur with that recommendation.
Thank you.
Not even longer.
Okay, so is there a motion by a member of the planning commission on this agenda item in this public hearing?
I'll motion to approve the conditional use as presented uh with condition of approval to the ten-foot sidewalk stricken from the conditions.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a a a motion and a second to approve it as presented minus uh condition number two requires a ten-foot uh sidewalk there. Is there any further discussion?
Quick question. We have talked about parking. Do we have to address that specifically or can we approve this?
Yeah, you're not imposing any conditions on parking, so you're adopting the the findings of the staff report.
Okay.
No, no conditions there.
Then I'm perfectly fine with it and I'm ready to vote.
Okay, well, now vote on the motion. Uh the motion is to approve the project as presented with the elimination of condition number two, which requires a ten-foot sidewalk on the Ellendale Avenue side. All those in, well, let's go through a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Newell?
Aye.
Commissioner Spofford?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Yes.
Commissioner Banford?
Yes.
Commissioner Kowash?
Yes.
Commissioner Gro?
Yes.
Commissioner Swanson?
Yes. Uh the motion passes unanimously. An order reflecting the planning commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within ten business days. Thank you very, very much and appreciate your patience and I hope you appreciate uh the level of detail and the seriousness that we place upon these matters. Thank you.
When do you expect to start building this? July. Awesome, excellent. Look forward to seeing.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to our second public hearing, which is a subdivision uh Oakdale Estates, phases three through seven. Steve Bennett Construction LLC, let me get to that point in my packet here, so I can do everything appropriate. What's that?
Of course, Andy, it's the one thing calling out.
It's all good.
All right, well, I I I'm not finding the cover to the to the second staff report.
Yeah, there you go. It's it's on the back. It's on the other.
On the back side of the last.
I got it, I got it.
Back it is in page number.
Okay, moving along and thank you for everyone's patience. We're gonna move on to our second public hearing. Uh this is a public hearing uh regarding property, which is uh identified as Oakdale Estates. Phases three through through seven. It's subdivision number twenty four oh one. Uh we don't have a street address with it, but I'm sure that during the staff report will be shown the location. Uh this is an official public hearing before the Dallas Planning Commission. And I now declare this hearing open at eight twenty nine P M. As this application is subject to land use proceedings recognized by state law, I read the following statement. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the commission and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue precludes appeal to the State Land Use Board of Appeals based upon that issue. So please direct all your testimony to the record and the applicable criteria listed in the staff report or to criteria in the Dallas Development Code you believe applies to the decision. The applicable approval criteria are found in section.
Four point three point zero seven zero.
Four point three point seven zero. Thank you, Andy. Uh at this time, I will ask if any of the planning commission members has a conflict of interest, a site visit or an expedite contact to declare regarding this application per subdivision. Seeing none, we move on. This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We'll begin with the staff report, followed by questions to staff. Thereafter, we'll hear from the applicant, including members of the applicant team for a total of fifteen minutes. And this may be followed by questions from the planning commission. Thereafter, we'll hear from all other interested parties and presenting testimony on this item before the commission. And each person will provide in five minutes of testimony. We'll then provide the applicant with five minutes to rebut any testimony that was received. After we've heard all testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the planning commission to deliberate and then ask if there's a motion in response to this proposal. In this case, the planning commission's decision is final unless the decision is appealed. At this time, we'll start with the staff report. So Chase, please proceed with our staff report. Thank you.
Yes. So uh this application is for uh Oakdale Estates uh phases three through seven. Um it's fifty-nine residential lots, uh two-acre open space located in the low-density residential zone. Um it's located south of the uh end of Hader and Ellis Streets in the southwest part of town. Um as we can see from the uh the zoning map, uh the area is located in the uh low-density residential zone. Um to the uh west is undeveloped land, um as well as to the to the south. Um to the the east is the uh industrial land, the the former log decks from the lumber mill. Um and then to the north of the site is uh Oakdale Estates, phases uh one and two. Um so as we can see again here on the vicinity, um the the project site highlighted there in the red. Um so phase uh two is under construction uh in that photograph, phase one having been uh already completed. Uh but again, it's adjacent to the the log decks and you can see the surrounding area is largely undeveloped at this time. Um the site um does have a couple noteworthy features adjacent and within. Um so the North Fork of Ash Creek is the um eastern boundary uh of the site. Um and so that flows uh to the north there towards uh the mill site. Uh there's kind of a dashed line on that. The city has been studying uh potential realignment of that creek channel. Um not really relevant to the proceeding here, but uh noteworthy uh enough to to remark on since we are looking at that area. Um the transportation system plan for the city um also shows uh Hader Street was a minor collector, um which would extend uh down through the site. Um ultimately down connecting to uh uh Bridlewood. So as a as an alternative route to uh Fairview um for folks uh in that area. Um so a a collector's street there. And so um kind of the the development kind of responds to these these constraints. Um so the plat that we have for the development, um again, it's the low-density residential zone, so the average uh lot size uh is five thousand one hundred ninety-three square feet. Um the average minimum lot size in the RL zone is five thousand square feet, so that that requirement is is met. Um so there's fifty-nine residential lots, uh twenty townhomes, uh thirty-nine detached houses. Uh most of the townhouses being in phase three, which is there on the northernmost portion with a few um then further down. Um there's also a a two-acre uh open space um that's highlighted in the green there. Um there is a wetland that's uh the hashed area in in the green uh open space. Um there's also a drainage basin. That's the oval on the 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 one side there. And then again, Ash Creek is the the uh the border there on the eastern side of that open space. Um so also the associated uh floodplain with the with Ash Creek there. Um we do have a development agreement um with uh the developer regarding uh the dedication uh reservation of open space for this area um to be uh two acres. Um that development agreement included both these phases here um as well as the open space dedication for uh phases one and two to the north. And uh future phases uh to the south, which are currently outside of the city limits, but were part of the original sort of parent properties from phase one. So when we're looking at the entirety of the potential developable area of those parent parcels, um two acres was the proportionate dedication share based on that acreage. And so when we did phase one, it wasn't entirely clear where the best place for that open space would be. So we did a development agreement saying basically, we'll figure that out when we get down towards where it would make sense for that open space to be. Um so uh trying to remember the order of my my slides here before I start sliding through them. Yeah, oh no, I went too far. Sorry. Um. Okay, all right. Yeah, okay. So um with specific regards to um the open space and the the development agreement, um the city, one of the the key languages in that development agreement, which I believe was included as part of the packet that went out to you. Good. Um so it did give the developer the the right to uh kind of specify the general boundaries of that. It can include uh floodplain, uh wetland, environmental conservation area, drainage basin, what have you. Um but the actual acceptance of it by the city um included the language of uh to the satisfaction of the city. Um and so in discussions with the parks director and the city manager, it appears that the city is not necessarily satisfied with the boundaries as proposed. Um specifically when they're looking at uh the two lots that are kind of smack dab in the middle of that open space. Um it's somewhat similar to John Bernard Park over on Academy, which has caused complications in designing the park improvements um in that park. And so um looking at some having these lots here in the middle of this open space, they uh were unsatisfied, as it were. So um the recommended condition of approval um is that uh the uh applicant uh form a homeowners association for the uh ongoing uh maintenance and uh care and ownership of of that open space that um as it's proposed currently, the uh the city um isn't really interested in taking on ownership uh responsibility of that. So uh as we get to the approval criteria and the proposed conditions, we'll see that. So uh subdivisions, seven approval criteria, um has to comply with the applicable uh you know code sections of the different zones. Uh complies with the plat naming and O R S chapter eighty-two requirements, which is a weird condition of approval, because really that's the jurisdiction of the county surveyor, but whatever. Um so street, roads, sidewalks, and utilities have to conform to adjoining development. Um any private common areas are identified, and so that's where one of these uh points becomes uh relevant. Um as mentioned, uh required state and federal permits can be obtained. So uh you know, wetland permitting, floodplain permitting, all of that kind of fun stuff. Um improvements required by the city and other utility service providers can be met and uh conforms to applicable master plan developments, which doesn't really apply in this since it's not part of our master plan. So staff report goes into some greater detail um with regards to those points. Um so the recommendation is approval with conditions. There is essentially uh three conditions that are not just our standard boilerplate that are specific to this uh proposal. And so uh those are called out here. Uh the first is more of a procedural thing. Uh documentation showing no net loss in the flood storage capacity shall be uh provided prior to construction plan approval. Um that documentation was not included with the uh proposal. Uh to the extent that staff have no particular concerns about the applicant's ability to provide that. Um uh we're comfortable having that as a condition of approval. Um the second one, uh phase boundaries to be amended such that phase four includes extension of Hader Street and associated public facilities uh to the southern boundary of the property and phase five includes extension of C and D. Um this was in response to the the This was in response to the the original phasing plan, which the way it was set up made it kind of look like, I want to say a spite strip, but by a different name. I believe the applicant has since then sort of revised the phasing plan. To sort of address those concerns and make the phasing of the different areas a little more equal in their appearance. So there was a bit of a revision of the phasing plan subsequent to the staff report being issued. So it appears that, I mean, we'll hear from the applicant, obviously, but that proposed condition can perhaps go away. And then the final one, as mentioned, that the homeowners association or other method of 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 private ownership and maintenance for the open space tract be established prior to final plat. Or concurrent with final plat, as the case may be. So that is the staff recommendation, approval with conditions. And that is the end of my slideshow. So happy to answer questions that the planning commission may have.
Is there a slide that demonstrates the phasing plan?
So I don't have that as a slide.
Necessary component of the application.
You know, that's an interesting question because there aren't really much in the way of approval criteria. Tied to it that would be relevant in this circumstance. Like we do have certain specific approval criteria for phasing plans. And the staff report does address that in terms of like, you know, temporary infrastructure to support development, blah, blah, blah. None of which were really relevant in this particular instance. So yeah, I I don't have a slide to it. But it should be in your packet. And that was the original.
That's been changed since.
Yeah.
That's why I asked.
Yes. And so it sounds like the the applicant can provide some additional contacts on that new plan.
We want a condition of approval to capture whatever the new.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Yes, I guess I misunderstood that question. Sorry.
Second question regarding this open space agreement. It's not going to be public. Because of the city's objection, a homeowners association will be required to maintain it. If those two lots were not part of the open space area, would this be considered to be a a city park, a public park?
So that determination is ultimately the jurisdiction of parks director, city manager, city council, kind of in that order. So I I can't I can't speak necessarily on their behalf.
You said they
It seems like
The agreement as is.
Right. It seemed like they would have less objection if those two lots were not developable lots, if they were part of the open space instead. That would give the parks department place to, you know, put a place structure, some kind of anything. That's not, you know, in in the floodplain and the wetland.
And what what we know is that this proposal was rejected. It we don't know. There wasn't a second part to that. But if
Right.
And the applicant may address that.
Right. And it's entirely possible that they may propose even a revision after the fact. So.
Well, I think you know why I asked.
I I
Prefer to see public park rather than HOA run.
Parks would rather not see two lots in the middle of it again.
I I think the guy who runs the lawnmower preferred not to have to mow more lawn. So I there's a whole different set of, you know, considerations from different departments. So I I can't propose to speak for them, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, I've asked my questions. Are there any planning commissions members that would have a question for staff based upon the staff report?
That was my question, too. The way it was presented, I understood that there may have been interest in a park. If it were not for the residents being there. So if the lots that were intended to be, you know, for development were removed, would they then be open to it? But you can't speak to them. So.
Yes. And the city manager unfortunately is not here with us tonight. So. Yeah.
Okay.
If for some reason those two lots magically landed elsewhere, or one of the two did. Would they then be interested is the question?
That would be something that would happen between the city manager and the
Exactly.
Parts and
But I'm
And they could do that subsequent to us
Yeah.
Taking action tonight.
Right. I I don't know that would necessarily need to be under the purview of the planning commission to make changes to the applicant's proposal in that regard.
Think so either.
He was
Throwing out.
Right. Would have to include justification, nexus proportionality, constitutionality of that kind of exaction. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, the reason why I raise this is because it's a condition. So if it's something that can be mitigated.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we are constrained in terms of our ability to impose exemption.
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend it go on down that road.
No.
No.
Any other questions from planning commissioners on the staff? Okay. So we'll move on. We'll now hear from the applicant. Applicant team, step right up. You've got fifteen minutes to present. Please state your name and your address for the record. And you're all set to go. Just go ahead. Let her fly.
All right. I'm Jed Bennett with Steve Bennett Construction. Address is six, five, seven, eight Congressional Court, Southeast in Salem. Been a while since we've been here, but we're back as, you know, we've actually built the the first two phases of Oakdale Estates. The last time we were here for an approval was for Applegate Crossing. So which turned out to be a pretty successful project. I think we met a housing component that doesn't get served as much as it should here in Dallas. And that's what we've aimed to do in Oakdale Estates, phases one and two. And that's actually the aim for this this next follow-on phase. So I do want to do a couple of points of correction. So yes, it is fifty-nine residential lots. Sixteen of those are are eight lots that were part of the initial thirty-four lot approval. And we are asking to split those up into sixteen townhome lots. So it's more of a modification versus an actual approval through a subdivision process, although that's kind of what we end up getting into here. And so as far as the breakdown of lots, it is fifty-nine lots, but the townhomes, eighteen townhomes, and then the detached houses would would go up by by two. So it's just the the unit count there is a little bit different. I think what I want to do is actually spend a little bit of time on some history of this project. And I might have to tag team Mr. Gilson back there because I think he's probably the one who has the most history on this on this project and the approvals of it. But relative to this open space, phases one and phase two, which were thirty-four lots in, I think, the original six and a half acres and then whatever some specified amount totaling somewhere around seventy-two lots in the next nine and a half acres. Had open space generally where it's shown today, where it's proposed today. But in that original proposal, the 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 southern portion, the nine and a half lot, nine and a half acres that we're after today. Was actually proposed as more of a grid type pattern. So that actually closed off the open space almost entirely by by residential lots. And what we know now today and through our through our approval process of the first subdivision was that Hader Street was meant to be a minor collector, shouldn't have ninety-degree turns. So we worked very closely with the city to modify a setup of of construction documents that were already approved. And some of the modifications took place were that retention basin that you see was actually oriented in a north, north, south orientation, which would have conflicted with the desired alignment of of Hader Street. So we had to go through the process of reorienting that retention basin so that it stayed out of the alignment of Hader Street. Additionally, we had to redesign the entire site plan. So you know, there there's been time, effort, money spent, you know, to to get to a point where we are today. When you see the open space as it is, you can see that there's a ton of of frontage of this of this open space that's now accessible by the public right of way. That didn't exist in the original proposal. So I think I think that sort of was missed in the staff report and how we got to where we are today. So I I want to make sure that's that's understood. And again, Tom, you can certainly speak to anything if I misspoke anywhere, but please chime in afterwards. So I I think I think that the project that we have, again, you know, we we cater to a segment of the market that is underserved in in Dallas. Most builders are building in that, you know, six, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar price point. And we're building, you know, under four. That's always our goal is to build under four. We have a few homes that are just over four hundred thousand. Just because that's some nicer amenities. And I think we have some folks here tonight that bought one of those homes. And so we we cater to that first time home buyer and the move down market. And I can tell you that if we had an HOA associated with this project. If some of our buyers that just bought in our in our last twelve homes, they wouldn't be able to afford it because the cost of that HOA would have been would have been too much for them. They they were just barely able to afford the homes that they got into as they were. So and certainly I know there there were intimations of losing two lots out of the subdivision. Losing two lots speaks to the overall affordability of the project. Obviously, the more lots that we can put in here and meet code. The better we can spread those costs over all lots and keep our home prices down. So I just want to make sure that's that's understood. I want to, I guess, ask a couple of questions relative to this condition to to have to form a homeowner association. We would ultimately agree to do it. I don't I don't think it's the right thing to do. I would agree to do it under protest, if you will. I don't think it's the right thing for the city of Dallas. I don't think it's the right thing for for this community. I think that by forming a homeowner association here and making this this property private under private ownership versus city ownership. Does the city of Dallas lose the opportunity to have some flow storage capacity? Does the city of Dallas lose an opportunity to have a creeks trail along Ash Creek? I think that was that was part of a plan, at least a plan that had heard. If this is under private ownership, that goes away. Does it impact affordability of potential of future homeowners? These are some questions I think need to be asked. I think the the other question should be asked is by by forcing a homeowner association here, is this really in does it contradict our current development agreement? And I understand what staff said. I would like to go to a point in the development agreement. You know, the original development agreement did not have the language subject to the satisfaction of the city. That was a second iteration of the development agreement. That was added on to at at the request of the city manager. The original development agreement, the spirit and intent of it said for us that the land the land to be dedicated shall not conflict with planned future street right of way extensions. That was really the intent of of the alignment of and the configuration of the open space. And I would argue that we've met that several times over with our current design. So I can understand where where the city might want to go. But really, the spirit and intent of that agreement was that one single sentence in paragraph two in the original agreement.
What's your question?
My question is
You said, yeah, I had a question about the development agreement. What's the question?
Yeah, our our does this condition contradict this development agreement?
Okay, staff?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
I defer to the city attorney.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anything else as part of your presentation?
No, I think that's I think that's pretty much it. I'm definitely here for any questions for staff. Like I say. I
Did you have a different phasing?
Sure.
Plan?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't have the actual plan, but I'll show you on our on our map. So basically what we
Boneboard, old school.
I mean, we we can use some computers, but yeah. So I think the original phase phasing plan had lots one, thirty-one and thirty-two as a phase. And then we had, I think, lots forty and forty-two and a portion of the street as a phase. What we would likely do is we combine lots one, two, thirty, thirty and thirty-one, thirty-two and thirty-three. And then these six lots down here in one phase. So kind of coming down here and then over and down to here. So they can have a twelve lot phase. So
Got it.
Instead of having four phases here, we break the three separate phases.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I guess there is the last piece this on the on the conditions that we want to make sure we're covering. So we covered the phase, the condition three F of the phasing. So basically, we want to revise that that applicant revised phasing to three phases in a size and configuration approval by staff.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Is there anything else that you'd like to add before we conclude your presentation?
No.
Okay. Sit tight, because now this is when I get to invite planning commissioners to ask questions to view the applicant. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I'm just telling again.
I understand the concern some like Parkside had two lots right here in the middle. What about addressing with a single lot in this area? Something to that effect to help offset. You know, maybe move away from the HOA if that were the case. Have another lot to move on. Is that one that's doable? I don't know what topography is out that way.
Yeah. So so actually, all these lots, I know it was kind of it was misstated that the two lots in the middle are not in a floodplain. They are in a floodplain and those have to be raised out of a floodplain. The conditions are actually worse up for the floodplain to the kind of northeast there. Is it possible? All things are possible with enough money.
Thank you, Tori. Any other planning commissioner questions for the applicant?
So with the phasing plan that you kind of talked about. Is phase four that requires the construction of Hader Street consistent with what you're planning on doing? So that if we approve this with that condition, we're going to be consistent with what you plan to do?
Yes. And everything is language was that it'd be in three phases and size and configuration as approved by staff. So staff would still have to work to
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and I and maybe just so we're not confusing numbers, I might have confused some things. So phase three is still going to be those sixteen townhome lots that were a real part of the first thirty-four. And then we would then have four, five, and six as sort of these new phases instead of four, five, six, and seven.
So basically, the next phase after three would include construction of Hader Street?
Correct.
Okay.
Or most of it, yes.
Well, the way the condition is written is you go all the way to the south end of the property. So
Well, okay.
You want to build this much and then leave this much to build later, do you?
Well, we're it's that would be our that would be phase six would have a portion of Hader Street included in that.
So then it's closer to what's stated here, but you have more phases.
No. So so yeah, so basically we we'd be revising.
But if it's subject to your approval or city approval, I'm not saying you specifically. Then that would work
Yeah.
Either way to what you're trying to do that.
Yes. I mean, ultimately, we we'd like to revise, you know, phase or condition three F. So we wouldn't be taking the street in 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 that first phase all the way to the southern property line. Or in future in this, in the next phase to the western property line.
And and again, if you if you go with as
Yes.
As approved by staff, then you're giving them an opportunity to just work it out.
Right.
Yeah.
So my question is, are you comfortable with?
I am. Do we need to change what we've got written here?
Yeah, I think
Yeah.
I I would say something like phase bounders shall be to be amended to three additional phases. I guess that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, it seems like that could be worked out in deliberations.
In size and configuration as approved by staff. Something like that. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Yeah, right.
We'll get there.
Good. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Any other questions for the applicant by planning commissioners? I have one. It's just go ahead.
Just go ahead. Regarding the open space. I don't see how if the way we're sitting here now. The city manager and the parks director have already said they're not comfortable with those two lots in there being a public park. Which means your only alternative is to make that open space private and take care of it with a homeowners association. So we have a you know, two conditions that don't meet. So if your concern is that you don't think you can do it with a homeowners association. We don't have a way, as I see it, of approving this without that being a condition as a homeowner's.
Well, it does say homeowner or or what is it? Or other or private ownership. So that, you know, I I don't
Right.
Want to I don't want to say homeowners association. The only way to get there.
Or private.
Yeah, we're just saying the city is not going to take.
We're not going to take care of it. So you're you're either going to have to, you know, put it in private ownership with one or both of those lots. Or homeowners association. Or homeowners association or work something out with the city at a future date. To make it acceptable as a piece of park property that the the city would take care of. But but as as it sits, you can't not have either a homeowners association or private ownership for that.
Understood, and and that's, yeah, that was where I was going. I I wholeheartedly uh. Would say that I don't believe that this condition meets the spirit or intent of of the development agreement. Uh, especially because if this was truly going to be part of that that idea. It should have included phases one and two of Oakdale Estates. Uh, not to mention, it should also encumber the future phases that would come online, which we can't guarantee that that would happen at the moment. Uh, this is definitely an afterthought and it feels as much and uh I I I I will do it. But I will do it under protest.
Yeah, as long as it's not a deal breaker for you, then we can continue.
Carol, go ahead.
So.
Questions?
It is a question. Did did the two lots fall into the green space? When you reconfigured to make Hader go the way the city wanted it?
Uh, so yes, they did. Um, and that was in large part because. Again, the original conceptual site plan had had a lot count in here that was actually all single family detached lots. And you can see that we have. Uh, twelve uh townhome lots, so they have a different value than than detached lots would. So.
Yes.
The price we paid for the property, of course, I mean, you know, shame on us, I guess, right? But the price we paid for the property, you could definitely consider. Uh, that we were going to have detached lots in here. Uh, however, we we worked with the city very closely to do something that made sense. Um, certainly. Throughout the entire process, just to get to the tentative flat process, uh, it would have been nice to hear this concern. Uh, I I think that this was our this is our site plan that we brought up in our pre-application conference. And this was not something that was discussed, so.
You might say communication was lacking on that.
I would say I would say it feels like somebody had an ace up their sleeve and brought it out at the last minute.
Okay, thank you.
Last one, if I may be so bold.
I might have the last.
You, my last one, my, I promise my last one. In your opening statement, you talked about. You try to build affordable homes. Um.
Homes are affordable.
Affordable, more as as affordable.
Not by definition.
But you brought this in as residential low density. Is there a reason you didn't do it medium density to have more lots? To make them more affordable, uh, because we have a dearth of medium density property. And it's very hard to get that apparently in town with everybody wanting to do low density. Why did you not do it medium density? And could you have gotten more lots?
Certainly, we could have gotten more lots. It was it was a low density zone. We would have had to apply for a zone.
So this is the low density, yes. Okay, sorry, that makes perfect sense. Never mind.
Wouldn't you have wanted to do medium density?
Yeah, we did medium density. That was our project on on Applegate Crossing, and I think it was a very successful project. I think it looks great. In the city, uh, it it works very well there. Um.
You didn't want to do a zone change?
Uh, it didn't. I don't know that it made sense here to do the zone change.
I can see why with the roads, the way they are and everything, it would be harder to put that many lots in that space.
Yes, and and I mean, we we thought through this very closely and we, again, we organized these townhome lots along the the collector's street. I mean, that all made sense there and tried to spread out uh the rest of the detached lots away from the minor collector's street. I I would say I don't know that really makes sense to put a playground next to a collector's street, but I know I'm not a parks designer, so.
Well, I applaud you for trying to make more affordable housing. That's really important in this day and age. I'm done.
Okay, uh, one last question for me, and it's clarifying question in regards the uh open space again. It it would be the applicant's preference that this would be. The open space would be adopted by the city as a park. That's your preference. Is that correct?
I I think that makes sense for multiple reasons.
Regardless of the of the difference of opinion on the development agreement, that is your, that would be your preference.
That would definitely be my first preference. I think it's actually in the best interest of the city if if that was the case.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much for clarifying that. Okay, so thank you very much. Excellent presentation. I think we've covered everything and we'll continue to move forward. So we'll now hear from folks that are in attendance tonight that would like to address the planning commission on this item. Uh, I know that we don't have anybody on the phone or electronically. So if there's anyone present here that would like to address this issue before the planning commission, please step forward. State your name and your address and let us hear your comments. Thank you, sir.
My name is Henry Kopitsky. I live sixteen thirty-four Southwest Ellis Street. I was in phase one of this development. I was given the documents, the development documents at the time, and one of the reasons that I bought that house. Was the city agreed, they made them agree to give them two acres of open space. They told me, well, they hadn't figured out what it was now. Now it sounds like the city is reneging on that and saying, well, we will take it because it's. You need an HOA to take care of it or something. And I guess from my perspective. I never saw a thing, a bird in a saddle from in a deal like they designated it and it was done. I didn't realize it had to have some conditions of an HOA or something. I would have never bought the house with an HOA. I'll tell you that. Uh, that's. I won't be part of the HOA, but it kind of bothers me. Um, the other thing I'm concerned about, and maybe you've already discussed this, is Hader Street is fifty feet wide here. That they have on this street map. You drive up to Oakdale and between Oakdale and Cherry, the road is thirty feet wide. That is a one-way bridge. Because people park in the street there because they don't have, some of them don't have garages. You have to sit there and wait for the people to go through in order to drive through there, because I do this all the time. You've got to find a way. Because right after Cherry, it's forty feet and forty feet, two cars can pass with people parked on the sides, no problem. But it's only thirty feet for one block. And it's going to be very congested and you're going to have a problem. So I'd say you gotta, you guys are bright, you can figure out a way to widen that. I'm sure that. Actually, the land is the city's and you could widen that street fifty on each side, no problem, except for the money to do it. But that needs to be done, especially if you can have this many houses in that. When we bought our house, we didn't buy on that side of the development because we knew that Hader Street was going to be the, where everybody was going to be driving in. That's why we bought in Ellis. The open space bothers me. I think you should take these guys. I think they had a deal or they thought they had a deal to give you the two acres. And now, to me, the city is reneging on what they said, at least from the documents I was given by the title company. I feel betrayed. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this issue? Yes, please step right up.
My name is Sean Stacey, four twenty-four Southwest Rose Avenue. Good evening, commissioners, president and vice president, city attorney, and thank you for your time this evening. I am a resident in phase two of Oakdale Estates. Um. They do make quality affordable homes, one that we may have not have been afforded, um, been able to afford elsewhere at that time. And it made sense for us to move into a brand new home where we felt welcome, wanted and loved. Um, and then, um, other than buying someplace else. I'm a little disheartened. Um, as a gentleman before me, um, spoke about the two acre open space. That was a thing that was an allure to me and my wife and my family. Um, knowing that we would have um accessibility to an area like that, maybe a walking trail or something of the of that nature. And I know you guys are bound by contracts and and verbiage that I quite don't understand and all that, but um. To hear of it. Um, I mean, I'm looking at those two white parcels and I think that's just less for me to mow if I work for your parks and recreation, right? Um, SBC does a great job of dressing up around the homes. Um, it kind of feels like I'm I'm under the impression that. I don't know what has been said, really, but if you give us those two little white spots and we're all good to go, it's kind of. What I'm hearing from your city parks, if those two places weren't there. It would be kind of a a good deal for us and we wouldn't have to worry about anything.
The difference would be, and I don't need to interrupt your testimony, the difference would be the city, my understanding is that. That would be eligible to become a public city park, were it not for those two parcels. If those two parcels are part of. This development, then it would be a private park owned by a homeowners association. So it's going to exist. Regardless whether or not it becomes part of the city parks, department's purview is what's. Being uh discussed here.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you right, then when we bought our property at four twenty-four Southwest Rose Avenue, we were told that we're going to have a two acre free. Space out there. If it becomes under a homeowners association. With, I guess, maybe a proverbial fence around it, right? You are not allowed in here. Is that what is that what that means? Is that up to the homeowners association? Is it up to the developer? Is it up to the city to implement those kind of rules? You stay out because you are not part of this.
If it's a city park, it's public property.
But if it is not.
If it is not, that is what is the question.
That is what is that question here? And that's what my concerns are, because that's not what we were told, as the gentleman said before, with the title company into. The documents that we provided were two acre open space accessible by us as a family.
Understood.
Community. That and that's what that's what kind of uh stings a little bit.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to testify this evening on this item before the Dallas planning mission? Once, twice, seeing none. Thank you very much for uh both of your testimonies this evening and the applicant. Um, we'll allow the applicant now, this is your opportunity applicant, uh, for five minutes to rebut the testimony that we heard. Uh, from members of the public.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any rebuttal. I mean, I think they're pretty much right on it and and certainly their their concerns of. A private space being fenced off and inaccessible to them is a very real uh real possibility. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are there any final comments on this issue from staff or the city attorney? We'll have our opportunity.
I'm just curious, before we close it, if it's worth keeping it open, we so we can hear from parks and things like that. I don't know, city attorney, if it's something that. I don't know if we have enough information, because this is a condition of approval for what we're having for us.
Yeah, well, yes, I mean, sure you can.
It delays your, I don't know if you're interested, keeping it open.
Yeah, it sounds to me like they had a chance to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, the budget budget implications here.
To this.
Yeah.
Butting of heads, that's what's in the staff report. I don't think it's going to get any different if we leave it open and have them tell us.
But Tori's question was, can you?
Right, we could, but I'm not sure it's productive.
Okay, well, that's that that's deliberate. We're we're peeking into deliberation.
Yes.
But I will, I will. Offer that I am concerned that a that a that a a hinge point. On the approval of this uh application is based upon a development agreement, which is not in agreement. A development agreement is an agreement. If we are disagreeing, then we don't have an agreement. So uh, when we deliberate and uh. We're going to have to figure out a way to to. Address that situation.
Yes.
Uh, so that's where we're at. So are there any any comments from staff or the city attorney on?
I I have.
Okay, before we close though, okay.
No.
Okay, before we close the public hearing, Carol, go ahead.
If we had a development agreement, and I think I heard the city attorney say that. The plan that is on the pages meets the development agreement. Then really, it's a matter of interpretation regarding that agreement between. The people that are coming here before us and the city. And the city has already said that they don't want the property as a park. Is there any possibility there would be an amendment to said development agreement?
That's a question for the city manager.
Okay.
That's not something that we.
Well, it's not our purview. I'm fine. Thank you.
And and the trouble with the agreement is that all the parties would have to agree when they sign it, so.
Oh, right.
Yeah, we we can't unilaterally change the.
No, right.
And if I understand correctly, the gentleman said in the first concept of the development agreement, it didn't say with city concurrence. The current development agreement that we're all talking about requires city concurrence. Is that correct?
That's correct, and you also have the fact that you've got a new application here as well. It kind of opens the whole thing up again.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so trying to make this thing, keep it, keep it fair, keep it legal, keep it understandable to us normal folks. Uh, with no other comments, we've heard public testimony, we've heard out uh testimony from the applicant. We've asked our questions of the staff and the city attorney. So I now declare this public hearing closed at nine fifteen P M. Uh, and now it's time for the planning commission to deliberate uh upon this topic. And I think I know what we want to discuss. So who would like to go first?
Who's first?
Anyone?
Are we going to talk about the 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 open space?
Well, I. Look, since I I like to go last, but I I I think it's important. We've got a development, a development agreement as part of this application. That is not in agreement between the applicant and the city of Dallas, which is outside of our purview. So I I am the last person. Having sat in the staff's chair and having sat in in the chair that I'm in now. I I I hate like heck to to uh delay. An approval for what I believe is is good development, but at the same time. We're kind, our hands are kind of tied in that we are uh making a decision. Based upon an agreement that is not been fully resolved. That's my concern. I don't have an opinion on it just yet, but that is my concern and. So I'll just leave it at that until everyone's had a chance that would like to speak. Go ahead, Carol.
So point of clarification, if if we were to approve it with conditions that are currently in place. Does it go to city council next and is it recommended or is it already?
Your final final decision unless.
Final approval, so then. They're stuck with some version of an HOA or something like that.
They've got to figure out how to take care of the problem.
Private private ownership.
Right, but it is still open space.
That is an requirement of the development.
Right.
And private ownership would be for these phases, not the previous phases. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah, to address the concern is who has access then, because of different phases.
Exactly.
So on the topic of four E, um, as a condition, could we have additional language in there that's around? Or? Another negotiated outcome between the city. I'm trying to get the some flexibility without HOA or private ownership.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is the application we have.
Right, right.
It's all we've got.
And and we don't, I mean, we don't, I assume most of us don't know what the Parks Master Plan says.
No.
We don't know what their or may have an idea what their budget outlook is like. So there could be various reasons why they didn't accept it. I understand where these guys are coming from, but what we have is what's in front of us, and that's pretty much what we have to go by.
Right, and we're not here to improve upon.
Right.
An application or to make 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 suggestions on how to make it better.
In a way, that's just not our job. We're just trying to figure out how to.
We apply the application, we apply the code to the application and render a decision to the rest of our. So.
Correct.
Can't deny it, because there's no reason to deny it.
Correct.
So. Here we are.
Well, there's always reasons, but.
Well.
I don't feel, I don't.
I don't think.
I haven't heard that we're there.
I wouldn't recommend to not.
Okay, okay, um, is there anybody else that would like to make a comment in the in the? In the area of deliberation?
I just have a question. If I made a comment was made. About private ownership and this being fenced off.
Right.
I'm not understanding a homeowners association, the homeowners own it.
Mm-hmm, right.
What is the fence?
You could uh give homeowners keys, key to access or uh uh keep punch pad a- a- access. Yeah, you could do something like that. It's pretty unlikely.
Yeah.
Because that creates problems for the homeowners in the association, then, yeah, it's 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 unlikely that it would be fenced.
It would be a private park owned by the home. Owned by the homeowners association.
Private open space.
Which we already have several examples.
Several of them on.
Hi. Is everybody done? I'm of the opinion that this should be a public park. And I am also the opinion that we can't render a decision until that development agreement is worked out between.
The agreement is worked, the agreement is worked out, and my advice to you is you have the legal authority to render a decision based on the conditions that are presented to you tonight.
Okay.
Where were you going with that? I was curious.
Oh, me?
Yeah.
I think it ought to be a public park, and I think that we ought to come to some sort of an agreement with the developer. To make it. So, and I I can't speak to how this was added in later, I can't speak to. The final outcome is this would be a de facto public park that while it was still privately owned by the homeowner, there's a lot of. There's a lot of uh. Wiggle room there. I'm of the opinion that a development of this size, this many lots, this many folks moving into that area ought to have access to a public park. And you don't necessarily have to live in the neighborhood to use that. Yeah, I mean, that's the way a park system works.
Sure.
So uh then I guess. I'll defer to Lane then as to how we can proceed based upon my opinion, which is I think this ought to be a public park.
Exactly what I'm saying.
Between the city and uh and and the developer.
Well. You have the authority to make the decision. You could. You could. Uh, delete the uh. Uh, four E. That would put the city in awkward position of perhaps appealing your decision to the city council.
Okay, and and.
That'd be interesting, they could have.
Can I say something?
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right, and also thank each other, Chase, Ryan, whether there is a state statute that requires. The city council to pass an ordinance to accept part of it, that's correct too, so you you're setting up a conflict.
Can I say something about the park part of this, both as a commissioner and as the chair of the parks board?
Oh, okay.
It sounds like the conflict is those two lots. The Parks Department has experience with having built the park. That has two lots like that in it.
On Academy.
That there are, yes.
Well, they're planning to build one.
Yeah, well, it's it's designed, it's been, the design's been paid for and construction is just waiting for the.
That was the whole history, yeah.
The reason those two lots are a problem. Is. It's inconvenient to take care of it and to design a park like that, but the main problem as I see it. Is it obscures all the sightlines. If your children are in that park. And they can't be seen from the street because there's a fence or an Anna House on those lots. Things could happen to your children that the police or the neighborhood or anybody else driving by could not see. And that is why with those two lots, I will not vote for this as a public park. Done. My my understanding, if I may, I'm not sure you understand all the technicalities, but the developer said. He will proceed with this development. And isn't that the thing to do? I mean, we if there's an objection, but we'll get it done, and the the alternative to that is a total fog for me. Where where we would go from here and what the outcome would be and when. If they've accepted it, let's just do it.
So the applicant stated that, you know, under under protest, they'll accept it.
And I understand where he's coming from, I I would be very sensitive to that, I just don't know what the practical solution is.
Okay.
Other than that.
That's that's perfectly fair, John, and I think that adds a lot to the conversation, I appreciate that.
And and uh the applicant would always have the option to uh appeal any conditions of approval to the city council as well, so. They are not without recourse if they are in fact under protest, so.
That's a good point.
So it sounds like no matter what our conclusion is tonight, it's probably going to the city council next.
No, I wouldn't know.
I would not have turned about that. Okay, well. We're still deliberating.
If if you're a business person, you need a route to a solution. We have that here tonight, anything other than this is just ambiguity for them. Further.
Okay. Public hearing is closed, uh would anyone like to make a motion? On a decision. On this proposal. Or do we want to discuss it further?
Just, yeah, I was gonna say, keep in mind that whatever you do with uh four E, uh they did propose the. Change in uh three F to say phase boundary should be amended to three additional phases in size. And configuration is approved by the by staff.
Okay.
Yes. So moved.
Have a motion and a second. To approve the application with the conditions as presented by staff with the modification to. Item F.
Three F.
Three F regarding the phase. So that's the motion, it's been seconded, let's do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Newell.
Yes.
Commissioner Spofford.
Yes.
Commissioner Schulte.
Yes.
Commissioner Banford.
Yes.
Commissioner Colash.
Yes.
Commissioner Grow.
Yes.
Commissioner Swanson.
Yes.
Okay, uh, the motion passes unanimously, an order reflecting the planning commission's decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant. And all participants of record, including the you folks who testified this evening within ten business days. Okay, so that concludes our second of two public hearings this evening, thank you very much for your patience and for the uh uh constructive. Uh uh participation in such, I really appreciate it, we try and keep a a good public process going here. Regardless of outcomes and 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 uh. Where we're at, so. Okay, moving on uh to conclude our agenda this evening. Uh, commissioner comments, are there any planning commissioners that have any comments to make for the good of the order on the record on? Anything we've discussed tonight or anything that's not on the agenda to see?
I like the way we work together.
Exactly what I was going to say, congratulations to you, this is a well-run organization.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You folks distribute democracy really well.
I just wanna thank Chase, he does a great job presenting and keeping it.
You're not mindless automaton, so you you do a great job.
Any other commissioner comments?
I I have one.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, we need to be really careful about talking to the um the people that are coming in with a hearing. Before the meeting. Just, that could create a look of non-transparency. So just note, please be careful about it, because sometimes that can cause issues.
Yeah.
It certainly uh could potentially be an ex parte contact, even if you're in a room, I would imagine, so.
One would think, so please be careful.
We all. We all want to see positive outcomes, we all want to reach uh conclusions that everyone, even if you don't get your way, at least you understand the reason. Why and it's easy for us to fall into helping a little too much and offering advice and.
Right.
Could we do this, and maybe we should do that, well, that's, I think that Rich Rich made. An excellent point this evening that says, hey, listen, all we have aside on is the applicant, application that was presented to us. And anything beyond that is really outside of our.
Yep. When I worked for the state, we would do um. We would do applications that were scored. And one of the big rules was. You may know different than what is said is in the application. But you can't judge it aren't anything other than what is right in front of it. And that's very important to remember, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, uh, are there any staff comments before we adjourn the seating?
Um, so I would just follow up um on on the the. Comment that that Schulte here had um about allowing the residential uses and the commercial zones. Um, the piece that I forgot to say in that explanation was that there's a minimum density requirement of twenty-four units per acre. To be allowed in the commercial zone, so if they were just building one or two or three dwelling units, it wouldn't be permitted. But because it was more than twenty-four per acre, um it had that that intensity of use to be. Right.
So you can't build a McMansion in commercial.
Correct, so.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Uh, there's a lot of in in real estate and development and appraisals and uh land use planning. We get confused about zones, like a an apartment building is considered to be a commercial development because it's a for-profit thing. But it's because they're not in necessarily in commercial zones, we can get our wires crossed a little bit there, so I think we need to. Bear that all in mind, so.
John, I know it's getting late, do you have patience for one question that has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight? It it's just, I was driving here tonight and I just, I don't know the answer to this question. Um, if somebody in the city in the in this uh commission or the uh anywhere here. Said said uh we don't want any more, this is a hypothetical, wild hypothetical. If somebody said we don't want any more housing developments ever built in this city.
Right.
Would it uh under under law or whatever, could that actually happen?
No.
Or does what, is there something from a state?
Yeah, it's a state law that limits. Um, moratoriums, and it's only permitted if you have an actual shortage of public facilities, and. Then it's still only permitted if you have a plan to.
Fix it.
Fix that shortage of of public facilities, so the 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 idea, the policy behind that is. If if in Oregon, every city is expected to bear its share of. Growth and. Uh, increase in population and housing, recognizing that if one city builds a wall, then that's just gonna push. Uh, demand for development to neighboring cities. And so uh the state law says now you gotta have a twenty-year supply. Um, and you can impose a moratorium unless it's in these specific circumstances. If you have those circumstances, you've got to be finding your way out of them, so you can take on that development responsibility.
With with zero population growth in the state that still is relevant?
Well, yeah, I I that's a rhetorical question, um, zero in some areas, uh not in in all areas. And of course, the law that was passed wasn't passed just at the applicant during periods of growth, it's still on books.
And I. And I would expand to that by pointing out that just because the population itself isn't growing. Doesn't mean that we have the correct number of dwelling units for that population, you know, we've been underbuilding for. Uh, a while now, and there's plenty of folks out there who would prefer to live alone, but. Can't afford it, have to have roommates, those sorts of situations that, you know, adult children living at home because housing's uh too. Unaffordable, so um I think that uh. Population growth and growth in the number of dwelling units are not necessarily the same thing.
Also.
But but it's good to have these questions because it 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 gives the chance to give that critical thinking of what we're doing.
John, in the past, this city has used a technique.
Yes.
It where they limited growth. By uh because of infrastructure that they actually needed to increase. And they had a plan in place to do that. Yeah, infrastructure growth, but it wasn't completed, and so they put a moratorium for a couple years in the interim. Until, was it sewer system or water?
Water.
Water, and and so they. We had an apartment complex that was supposed to come into Dallas at that time at the state level. And we almost didn't give them twenty-five million dollars for the city of Dallas because they did not have enough infrastructure. They almost lost that development.
John, one really good example of how you can have more population than dwelling units. Think about all the people that are renting their houses out as Airbnb or whatever, so you've got all this stuff that's vacation property now. That people can't live in year round, so you've got all those houses sitting there, but we've also got all these homeless people sitting on the side of the street. Because there is no place for them to live or live affordably, and this. Example that we approved here tonight is an excellent example of how we're putting people, how they're. You know, figuring out a way to put people in shelter. Well, I think that's excellent. It it is late, but I had a conversation with Brian, uh city manager. Two weeks ago or something, we really need someday to have some time together. For those of us who were newer here and don't have the background that you folks do, trying to connect two things, all the. All the background that you just described on one side, and all the law and all the precedents on the one side, on the other side. Is the will of the people of this city. And there's a collision. There. And an examination of understanding what the will of the people in this city is, and we've agreed agreed with Brian to an easy way to get that done. To understand what that is. Then, so if we knew that, then. So then what?
Yeah. Yeah.
But if for no other reason, like. Than better understanding on all of our parts so that we can be ambassadors, we get these questions all the time, I go, oh.
Yeah, in 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 very broad bush. We have a comprehensive plan, because every city in Oregon is required by state law to have a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan uh drives our development code, which has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And 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 so I would say that the will of the people, the collusion, at least it's constrained by state law. That we as a city have to comply. So we can't. We can't adopt a comprehensive plan that is inconsistent with law and policies established at the state level. Um, and our developed code uh has to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. And so there are limitations on what a city can do in terms of striking out on its own.
And whether we believe it or not, all those development codes, all those comprehensive plans, all the state laws, all the federal laws. Are what the people have decided is important to do. And and however imperfect system that is, all this development code is. Is trying to give us a foundation to make these decisions and say. You know, if you're gonna build a commercial building, you gotta put it ten feet from the property line, or if it's downtown, it's because you want it to look consistent and pretty. It's all about pretty, it's all about. All these things, why we've got, we want more low density, why we want more medium density, why we want more high density. Because we want to make it possible for all these things to happen, because these are supposedly community values, and they do their best.
Different people are gonna have uh different opinions, different values, and you know, it it's uh managed democracy and and you guys are here distributing freedom. And so, to the extent that you guys are afraid of that, we we really love everything.
You are.
Thanks, everybody, good meeting.
Yes, indeed.